Good corn stocks in the ditch.
N six unless sooner revoked or when the deputy ceases to perform above named duties. And there's you.
Okay.
Um.
Okay. Hi, Emily Ehlerton, having been appointed a deputy treasurer of Worth County under Jake Hanson, treasurer of said county. You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Iowa. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of deputy charger according to the best of my abilities. So help me God.
Let me just need to sign there. Okay, Jake's fine. Next.
Thanks everyone.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Have a good day. All right, so moving on Rich. Don't have anything for you today. So the weather does this week. We're out playing roads and trying to get things. Word away, get our rock man together so.
It started moments.
Well, not only know we have not yet. I know that. Been looking at. We've got our summertime guys probably gonna be hired here in the next couple of weeks. That's why I know Mike's getting here. That's why we haven't started yet. I don't technically it's that on July fifteenth thing, but we are.
Yeah.
We're because of the safety.
Oh man, he can't.
He's been known for a long time already.
Yeah, cuz uh.
It's such a moisture.
Yep, you know, you know, can't have three foot tall grass.
Well, we will. I'm sure we start the next week or so.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Anything for Richie guys? Good. Branded.
Yes. Um, so I have that. Second work order for Rod Nelson. He got that last week's time back in April, brought us in there, then they found there is another. Suckle that needs fixed so.
And if that was in the same area. Wouldn't have made more sense for him to just do it all at the same time while he gets more going back there.
Yeah, like they realized till later because he said there was standing water.
Oh, okay.
Be good, so.
Show up at the times where that is with more rain. It's one of those where.
Yeah, there's kind of goes some.
Yeah, yeah, I had even known it would have been, but I.
Sure a little bit. I'm sure they would have fixed it. Right, or saw.
Yeah, it's just down the way a little bit, so. Same area, but.
All right, uh, welcome to approve the uh work order for Rod Nelson. Second, second, yeah, discussion. All favor I, I, I vote.
Yeah, I got you. Just bring your attention. So I sent you guys an email last week about. Um, so they did get, cuz he just wanted permission to get in that right away to dig. There was a bunch of standing water. He said that they did get in there. It looks like uh they got the water moving, but there are a few pipes that need replaced and the ditch needs cleaned out. So I told them that. We'll just fill out a work order. Do that. I didn't have it officially on the agenda, so I hope you got it in the way until next Monday to sign that.
You could actually have the exits on the other side of the road.
Yes.
Some.
Now, is that one of those things? It's a. One area thing or should everything be checked out?
It's just the old ladies.
Yeah, where the problem is isn't in the drainage ditch. It's the outlet going to Hell Creek.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
And DD thirty, we haven't had anything to offer this one for.
Just checking.
Is that something that secondary roads need to do or is that something to fire up?
Yeah.
I had Colton talk to you about. Old and old DD thirty, it's up there in Bristol.
In the ditch right away?
They got in there and cuz they want a permission basically to.
They wanna pick mercy go in there and dig it.
In the right way. They said they got the water moving. Um, there's little tiles that need fixed and then the ditch needs cleaned out.
We can clean the ditch out. I guess I don't know where the tiles need fixed someday.
Right.
So it's right at the outlet, and outlets on the north side of the road and it just, you know, so I think he thought it was.
Oh, it's up here and it comes down and goes across that road and it goes. No, but I looked at it though.
So.
So the tile needs repaired where?
And where she actually was like. Uh, well, it's got thirty's gotta have a way to outlet, so it's going to the.
Yeah.
It's going to Hell Creek, so even though that's not part of thirty, it's gotta go. The way it looked to me. And so.
When you talked to Colton?
Uh, last week.
The map.
Yeah.
On sixteen.
I've heard about it many times.
Oh, calculator or calendar. It goes like Thursday.
Thursday.
Mm hmm. And then Paul called me back on Friday and said they got the water moving, but.
Yeah, we can clean the ditch. I mean, if that's what it needs to be done.
Okay.
Fix the tile and if it's in the right way.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in the right way. You're gonna take care of it.
We're off my list.
Yeah.
Um, and then I got an email from Chad for all. He was questioning, he said. Um. Colton an email he forwarded to me. He asked about DD thirteen tree spraying. I sent him back and said they were sprayed last October. And then he was asking about. So he says he's got us what he calls sub main. It's only eight or ten inches and it's blown out at least four times. He's had it replaced with place cement PVC pipe and plastic tile. So he's wondering what he can do to get that upgraded to like a main or an additional main. So I thought it'll probably be an improvement and I sent him a. Work. Order repair request, improvement request to fill out, so. And that was Friday. I haven't heard back from him on that, but that might be coming. This week.
Yeah, so did I have?
All those things are blowing up. He's got some kind of problem inside.
Mm hmm.
You know, he.
Yeah, it's up to. Yeah, if he's gonna come forward to that, let's have to get Bolton making ballers.
Yeah, also he 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 just needs to request it. Take a look. Get an engineer.
I'm starting my phone out the request and then.
Yep, yep, start there and then.
Was he unhappy with tree springing? Apparently they were growing back. Is that right?
Well, I never heard back from him. I emailed him back Friday. Just haven't heard back yet. Not sure I'll hear this week.
Because generally like on that fall spring in the past. Instead of the fall spring and work, they guarantee it come back and take care of it, so.
Okay.
That's in the past when his dad was doing so.
Yeah, that's something we need to touch up over here, then.
Yeah.
We'll find out.
Yep.
Hopefully he'll get back. Hopefully he'll. Chad will get back, yeah.
Cause he'll stand up and they'll keep going, so, right.
Um, one more, Robert Garnis called. He is just south or just direct to the east of that wetland they built for DD twenty one west. And he called said he's flooding out. That area, so I sent um Bolton one. Message and then Colton Cunningham went Thursday and went looked at it. He said his yard didn't look too wet. He goes the burn's fine. So it's not like overflowing, but he said his tile outlet, so at the bottom there it kinda. Where overflow is and he's got his little tile outlet. He said that looks like it's maybe plugged.
And is that personal tile?
He had water in there and so he's wondering if it's at his tree line maybe plugged in.
It's larger than the basement. Once you get a lot of problems.
He just says he's flooding out, so. Says he wants to investigate.
Yeah, he's got blocked out. That would be his thing.
So Colton's gonna double check the right away for DD twenty one, but he's pretty sure that tree line and where his tile runs is his property, but.
You should.
I I also went and looked. And the only place I could see from the road that looked wet was east of LD. There's an intake out in the field that there was.
Oh, east buildings.
Well, it's he was. Yeah, just like a hundred yards east of his house.
Well, I don't even want it.
Well, what I'm guessing is is that I'm guessing that outlets into the road ditch.
Yep.
And then, you know, because of the water level and the creek coming out of the wetland.
You think so?
But and I think, you know, it it probably has always been that way that that tile has been slow when that creek was full.
Right.
I mean, I. But I. Cause I Jackie was worried about the aqua burb and I said.
Yeah. Oh, the burbs are sealed, aren't they?
Yeah, I I told her about the ones we have and I said, you know, and yeah. In oh eight, we did bounce over the berms we have on a couple of them and. Me and.
Yeah.
That's a lot of water.
A lot of water.
Yeah, the one that's coming through there are pretty good.
Sure do. I gotta go to Mason and drive by there too.
Has anyone looked? And we, I mean, we talked about it once. They may ever mess the levels that ones. There's.
I told them that they, just to find out from. From. Hold them make what what we're actually supposed to keep the water level at because, you know, everybody above the drained wetlands. Has credits and so they probably have to have a certain pool level to maintain their credits.
Isn't that low? It's just a solid level or is there gates?
I think there's.
They're three on points and roll.
We gotta key.
No, I think there's gate. There's 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 a.
There's a package structure there and you can slide gates into adjust the depth of that pond.
But you know what I mean? Where I don't, that's what I just said. I I'm not gonna move anything cuz I'm not gonna.
Right.
I said it. If they say yes, pull aboard. I said I'm glad they go down and do it. We do it all the time for us, but.
But that would just put more water in the ditch.
Yeah, we just build a ditch quick.
Yeah, they're gonna get rid of that backed up water any faster. I mean, it's at a good level.
And with those structures, once it's flowing over, like if if the tiles running. Full downstream, doesn't matter if you have all the boards in or none of the boards in, the tile can only run full.
Yeah, that means you don't want to discon take so much to it.
Right.
You're gonna lay all the much water, so.
And in the future, in the future, I mean, that's. If. If they say we need to pull them, like I said, we can pull them cuz we do it. It's not.
Right.
It's not out of our line of work, but I'm not getting monkey listening till I get told to do it.
Right.
Cause he. And I told, I had told that you guys to do it, not how my people of the district.
Are you guessing they're all in there?
I don't know.
Cause I bet he'd probably rather have it up more so that. It would drain.
What it looks like. I mean, upstream anyway, they're getting drained.
Yeah.
Cause in the past didn't get drained. They're still getting drained wherever it's set out right now. There's no ponds in there.
No. So I.
Three ninety.
That's what I said. I said from, if that was a county owned wetland, like if that's one of ours, I would be very happy with how it, I mean, that's it's doing what it's designed to do.
Yeah, and I mean, they reserve more tile and then put a whole much more.
Everybody, yeah, so the amount of water coming through the system in general, which is that much higher, so. But we didn't, like I said, I ran out and looked at it and okay.
I say.
They said the burn was good. It wasn't like going over that, so.
Yeah, it wasn't even in the spillway. It was flowing out through the spillway, but it was not. I I anticipated it to be really ripping through there compared to.
Well, I've seen it flow out of a really good cold heavy rain, so.
And then maybe somebody talk to Albin and see what he specifically is. Talking about.
Well, he's already talking with the engineers, right?
Yeah, I think they just look at it, so.
We need. But we need stick with his own system, unfortunately.
Mm hmm.
I'll be back in a second. You guys have to give me a picture on that. That's kind of back the um what are they doing needing? Just saying for that book.
Do we need to approve this, do you?
No, it's just a minute.
Just a minute. That's from their meeting anyways, they got.
Just basically copy and paste them.
Just so we have a record of it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's as I know.
Okay. Thanks, Mel.
Yeah.
Uh, planes.
Arrow.
They roll. That a motion to approve they roll for him.
The motion approved later.
All right. All favor I?
All right.
All right. Well, most. Are there any reports?
Nope.
Their eligibility or salary changes? Salary changes, uh, six month increase for a couple new employees for Daniel and Adam. Their motion to approve the salary.
So.
Also, I got a fifth, any special? Very none, all favor I? Vote. Hey. What your license?
Hmm.
Good day. Country view acres and halftime resort. Your motion to approve both. I will make a motion to approve both. Okay, any discussion? Very none, all favor I?
All right.
I post.
It's taste the season. Most we'd like to get both carriers. The warm is looking for this and it burned it in the little.
It's kind of worried about June first.
I mean, say. We're gonna have a couple weddings. And the happy times was going this weekend. Weddings end virtually.
Yeah. Places stay busy.
Yes, they do.
Mm hmm. You want management plan updates? That is.
I'm gonna send you up, yeah. Which one? That's it.
Blue.
Yeah.
Their motion to acknowledge.
Motion to acknowledge.
Okay, there's a second. I'll save it. Any discussion? All favor I, I, I vote? Yeah. Knowledge to never manage. Building ground, the elevator, I still gotta call out my dad. Tired of saying that, but I'll get to it. It didn't rain much last week, so I had a lot of catching up to do.
Wow.
Oh, y'all have time this week.
Yeah.
No, our problems on top of.
Um, I did talk to Shane about mowing, so he can take care of those few minor issues, so. Um. And did, you know, Dan did, uh.
They did come here. They were up on the roof, but I never heard any.
Okay, also, I'll call them back and ask them if they found anything obvious or.
Yeah, they they were up there like. An hour or so back on that one, so.
I saw them caulking. That's really been serious. They had a cotton gun there.
Yeah, it's just where I left, where I left the Maryland's office. It was like, there's a mat run through there. It looked like it was, it may have been coming from up above. So I hope it's just a flashing. Some water got. Down in there at the top over the years and. Dried out and cracked most likely.
She had cracks and yeah.
Did they look over here too?
That's what I gotta check. See if they. What they, if they looked or what they found.
Had a question. We have.
At our Kinsig location. Around, we got such a small area of mole. And uh, it's getting pretty thick again. I think we used to have, I don't remember who used to be there with all that, but.
Our Keen.
And he's retired now. We just, we tried using our other mower and we can't get all the way up to uh or up up the burn very well. Can we just get if. Somebody had called and offered. To mow it, I don't, if even if they got, we've got to pay him. Is it okay just to get him in and just do it? I mean, it's a small area.
It's probably a local person.
It is.
Wants to take over for art.
It's a local person and I would just assume for a smaller area, it is, it's gonna cost us twenty bucks or whatever. Rather than trying to get a mowing bid for twenty bucks worth of. Whatever. I don't even know what's gonna. They they offered to come in and mow it. I don't know, like I said, if they wanna do it for free or if they wanna charge us, but I really don't. I just think it gets pretty ratty up there and it's so tight. We can only get in so far with our mower tractors. Have them do it and if it's something that needs to be. Bet out for a future, just get through this year anyway, like you know, and bet it out, do like a three year thing or something if that's the case.
All right. Put them all together, so.
Right. Yeah, yeah. All right. Yeah. On the top of Iowa water mains, we got some paperwork for that. Uh, one work back though, Melissa.
Uh, I went to CDN on Friday and there's two prospects that I'm gonna send for the interchange. Um, one I'm pretty excited about, uh. Hopefully something will happen there. And then next week I won't be on the meeting. Um, I have to go to Buffalo Center for a daycare. Meeting.
Sounds good. Cross our fingers on our prospects.
Yep.
Okay, you got it, Melissa? Yeah, thank you.
But.
Uh, people service here last week. So. Um, Brian, you're applying. So we have potential closed session. Um, need to ask you if you'd like close session.
No, this is.
Okay. All right, we will not be going into both session room. Um, and the discussion is. Uh, to evaluate professional competency of an individual who's appointment hiring performance or discharge is being considered when necessary at the end of. And. And that individual request a closed session, which I did not, so. We will remain in our open sit or uh, open meeting. Um. We've. Had numerous comments, complaints. Discussions about things around here. And we're a little frustrated. I don't know what you guys think. Um, so even. About. Basically, we wanted to get the mowing bed out. Um, so want to please stop it out. And. Possibly reduce this. Position down to part time. So. That's better. Discussions, I guess, overlook. Quite some time. Um. But I don't know what your thoughts are. I guess what the other two guys' thoughts are exactly on. Whether to continue contracting out or. What we gotta do cuz. So what do you guys think?
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta do something different. If we do contract, I think that'd be great. I mean, for a part time person, that wouldn't be bad either, but I don't know if anybody wants to do a part time. You know?
I don't think you get quality with part time.
Right.
And with the windows. I just don't want the liability. I don't wanna mess with the boom truck.
No.
I don't want the liability, somebody being up there in the boom truck backing it across here when it's wet. Let's just get professional then take care of the windows on the inside now. And as far as the mowing goes, we had a gap in there for quite a while. We had to get somebody to cover it. There's no two ways about it and. This way, when you are gone. We don't have to worry about that. We got, we got, we contracted it out. It's on a weekly basis. So.
Yeah. So I guess. I don't know. What we uh. Like you said, part time is the direction we wanna go. Uh, if we can, otherwise we're contracted out. Um. Is that something you're at all interested in?
Part time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's I just, I think that's the direction we wanna go. Where I have to go. So.
Yeah, I think so.
How you do?
We just, we need somebody to take care of it.
Yeah.
So. Action would be.
Do you have any questions, comments? So, I guess, you know, um. You on the part time today or what? Okay. Yeah, I guess that's what we gotta. That's that part of our action, I guess, word of our action item.
Yeah.
For us start effective now or?
Two weeks.
In the first. Yeah. May thirty first. So that starts up to you guys, but.
Well. Maybe technically it should be a two week deal, but. Two week knows.
Sure.
So.
Start June third. Okay. You wanna make a motion then to. The definition part time effective June third.
Oh, my God.
Okay. I will second that. Okay, there was a discussion on it. Very none.
Oh. What? What does that mean to me? I guess so like you just. You either put me down part time and I quit or you're eliminate me or what on June third, I guess.
Well, I'm sorry.
I don't know.
It just stuff. If you're not willing to take part time, then. Basically. The job will be part time in two weeks. Will reconsider part time, so if you'd like to continue for two weeks. To finish timeout. Fine, um, if not, I understand that too and. It wouldn't affect we still. So consider, consider the two weeks. You know, on us, but.
No. But do I collect unemployment time or am I just, just out or what's the?
You can't. Yeah. Because the position was reduced and. Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I'll just do that then.
Yeah.
Or two weeks or whatever and. Look pretty good, or whatever, it's a lot of problem or whatever I have to do, I guess.
So you wanna stay there for two weeks, so. Or.
Yeah, okay, it's this thing, I guess.
And then. Yeah, but it'll be nothing will change for two weeks.
Well, for employment and look pretty good, yeah.
Yes. All right. Where's more from the second? All favor I?
All right.
I post. Yeah. Most carriers. Thank you. Uh. Yeah, it wasn't, we never did leave our. Our open meeting, so.
Yep.
Uh, department head discussion. Anyone?
Uh, I got a call this morning from Kel-Tec. They're ready to start. They wanna schedule the insults for the computers in the. Uh, patrol cars. Um, so I'm working the. I'd love to get them in as soon as possible, but I still haven't gotten the laptops from them yet to configure, so. Uh, we're trying to get that done, but we're meeting later this sec, this morning, but. Gets more deeper, but that's coming. Before the end of the month, so.
Good.
Good.
You got any net?
Just moving forward with the Mitchell County, we do have some good potential for some hires for the deputy's position. Um, we're basically down to where I feel comfortable right now. As far as personnel, so.
How many? Were actually qualified that passed the testing out of the group you had?
We had five individuals pass all the testing.
Okay.
And of the five, we fell up. Three were exceptional. One was good and one was weak.
Okay.
Um, and we did send three on to further testing with MMPI and. Um, health physicals, so.
Good. Sounds good. Ruth, me Jim.
In in our June meeting, we're gonna be talking about our board, about some rate changes for. We're potentially gonna go increase for Silver Lakes Camping and also shelter house rental rates increase. We're gonna be looking at, so, and just so you guys know. And then Sam, did you see my email last week about these cameras at Keenan's?
Is that like Friday or Thursday?
Thursday or Friday.
I was. I did not see if it was on Friday. I would go and state check.
No, that's, I figured that's where you were, so I, I wasn't too worried about it, but I. I told, I, in the email, I said, what it was the code that was blinking on the cameras, just to.
Okay.
And so I think it's an IP address error, maybe. What it, what the code that I've said, but.
It had to do with solar flares.
Well, that's about when it started. Let me be honest.
Just gonna be, just thinking. And so, I mean, again, that's what I know some of that remote signal stuff is some of the stuff that's invented, but working on your legs fine. It's just Keenan's and.
I think it was. Five oranges and one blue, I think is what I said.
Well, I'll look that up and see what.
I did try and just restarting down there, you know, on the switch and it was the same thing. The cameras went through the full reboot cycle, but gave the same.
Okay. The. All the cameras are.
Pretty much.
Yeah, all, all it says, I like in the, you know, on the Ricotta site, our access site, it says that they're all down. Uh, I only actually looked at the code on the one, I bought cameras, it was, I didn't have to get on a ladder. But I could, I could run and check that, make sure they're all blinking the same code, but they all, you know, on their.
Yeah.
On their dashboard, it all says the same information, so.
Sounds good.
Um, have you been looking at your building anymore?
And I've had Manson go out and go through it with me again, and I, I think it's gonna be so close, otherwise, I don't. I don't know that we wanna do it without doing all the steps necessary in case there's an overlap, you know what I mean?
Yep.
So, if I'm back with, getting with Rich, and when we engage architects and engineers to make sure that. We do things right, cause still waiting for the dollars to estimate, they, they were working on something, I'm hoping to get it soon. So, cause, you know, if it was, if we were off fifty thousand dollars, I'd feel a lot more comfortable than being on. Ten or fifteen thou, you know what I mean, cause in construction, that could happen like that, in that it was over, we didn't follow the process. They're reliable, you know what I mean?
And, yeah, hopefully, I do, right, hopefully, we're fairly accurate, cause it's not like you're tearing something out to remodel.
Right.
Already open, so you know what's there, it's like you tear apart, like, oh, look what we found. But yeah, we, we've gotta stay legal, yeah, do it proper, okay, so, hopefully.
And then, and then the other thing is, I need to get with Richard, we actually need to go out and just kinda walk through a site, or rough site map, cause that may. What, just from discussion with our staff last week, we've had a couple inquiries about long-term camping at the campsites that are in our building.
Hmm.
And, you know, when we were scaling back, we had talked about eliminating some overhead doors that were, we were proposing to the north, well, now. Some of the thought is maybe on part of the building that, that your entrances are the north, so that way we can. You know, if we have construction workers come in, we can get six hundred bucks a month or whatever for them to do it.
Yeah.
So run, run through the revenue when I. It's that, it's there.
Sense of stuff is there, I agree with.
Cause you had openings on that north side too, they were kind of already headed and everything.
Yeah, there's.
It's built for.
It's built for it, and, and originally, when it was thin, that's why we did it, well, when we were trying to, you know. Find two things down, it's like, well, we have the doors here already, let's just do here, well. If it's gonna be that close, you know, maybe on that west end, we do just stay, but we're still gonna have doors in the north, so that way we can. At least utilize half or two thirds of the campsites, if, if we need to, I, I'm not saying that. We're always gonna have people there, I, I do know that during fair week, we already picked up some overflow from, from the fairgrounds being full, so.
Right, yeah.
But, you know, those ones for us, as far as we're concerned, those are the best campsites in the world, cause we don't have to do anything, I don't. So we don't have a bathroom to clean, we don't have garbage to get, it's. It's, they just go. You know, I mean, that's, it's done, so, less, uh, overhead on, to good. So, that's good.
Yeah, there you go.
Uh, that. Our safety action plan, we have reserved those sites, you'll be able to use the room for your meeting, we're gonna go to the. Public health room for our smaller meeting in the afternoons, I think we're all set up that, so it doesn't affect you guys at all. You guys can make it in the morning and then in the afternoon, engineers will get together and, yeah, I think we're good. On those dates.
Yeah, any else, many other department heads? The brother's weekly, you know, I had partners for children, and basically, we went through the financials. And went through the R F D, get those in line for the next fiscal year. Short meeting. Mark? I had, uh, Night Hog, Monday night, um, kind of a short agenda, we had, uh. Enterprise offers. Uh, leasing basically of vans, eight, twelve, fifteen passenger vans. Uh, for basically carpooling to work locations, um, that sometimes. And I think it slowed a little bit, but, just because they can't handle the workload, but there was times when Night Hog was transporting like eight, ten people from. Mason City to, or the place in Clear Lake, or Antac County somewhere, actually shuttling. So we're looking into that because of the cost, what it costs to, or run, operate one of those buses compared to what it costs to. Operating one of our buses now is significantly less. Um, and so they're gonna reach out to some of the larger facilities, whether it's Sukka, One Bagel, all those.
Something used to be that years ago, there used to be partners, but you know, say in Juman, like there. One bagel, I think it does, I don't know who was doing that shuttle, it was one bagel, they're not at all.
But, um. It, it.
I just remember the bus was going all the way to old sage.
Yep, and it's, uh, it would be in the neighborhood of, I would say like two hundred dollars a month. Per person or something like that, I can't say I'm that for sure, but they were just kind of some estimates, and I thought to myself, we're driving, you know. Sixty, eighty miles a day around trip, by the time you go there and back, that's pretty, pretty reasonable, not that big, your own vehicle and.
Plus it increases your insurance for driving your distance, if you answer that question, and you charge more.
We have no fuel, we have nowhere to turn your vehicle, it's just so, they're looking into that to try, and they're gonna talk with some of the factories around and see if. If there's interest in, we might end up lease, or leasing some vans, and then, and then they're not the great big vans, there was something that. Anybody with a driver's license, um, or can run drive, so, so yeah, that was a, a good thing there, and, uh. Audit was officially done and all completed, and everything was good there with their annual audit, so. That was about it, that's all I have, so. If I know them, the cattle would say, you know, you'd send an email, Jackie, but I haven't heard.
Yeah, we got, I mean, I just wanted to.
You didn't someone say they were going out into July?
Yeah, it's July now.
It's July now.
Is that the?
Yeah, someone.
Yeah. No, they haven't even applied as the I U B or whatever, they're saying July instead of June, so. Yeah, once, once we hear anything from that, but, they did reach out just to update that, so.
I knew the fair dates, I put those in.
Okay, well, nothing else, I take most of the journey. I'll second it. Alright, all favor I, alright, motion, there is, or, or, uh, meeting the dirt.